Very good. Call the meeting to order. The, uh, what's today? February thirteenth, day before Valentine's Day. Regular meeting of the Minuteman Regional School Committee. Could I have a motion to adopt remote participation as written in the agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
Oh, you be quiet. I don't like you, Siri. Okay, roll call. Remember, roll call vote, we're remote again.
Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Sarah Montague Arlington, yes.
Erica Elsie Bolton, yes.
Steve Willdo Concord, yes.
Maggie Sharon Dover, yes.
Charlene is not here, so we go to Sharon.
Sharon Musto Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulven Needham, yes.
Alice Stukascho, yes.
Very good. Thank you all. Think that's Maggie's first vote. Good. As far as I have received, there has been no public comment submitted. Is that still true, Julia?
That is correct.
Very good. Chair's report. Anybody have an item for the good of the organization? We're going to talk a lot about the good or the organization on Thursday, so that's fine. Um, yes.
I, I was gonna save this, but it is for the good of the organization. I, I want to thank everyone for their participation in our process. But I mean, I'm just, you know, really thrilled with, you know, how many people are watching the videos and who have sent in comments. So thank you to everyone who's been participating.
How many comments were there? About two hundred, one fifty, two hundred, somewhere around there?
Oh, but a lot.
That's a lot. Okay, very good. Letter regarding the state admissions issue. Who would like to take up this one? I could take it up. Who are, who are the authors of it? Alice. Uh, so here's the issue. We have a letter. That is our first foray into the argument about the lottery system as an organization. It's not the last thing we're going to do. We're going to do many other things. The letter is a balance of get it out quickly versus everything we'd like to say in it. Is there is some pressure to get it out? Now, there are a lot more things that I personally would like to say to the general public and to the governor. But, uh, we have been informed that it is important for us to get something reasonable out ASAP. So rather than have a long discussion and make it more perfect, which we could do over time, my recommendation would be to send this letter out as was written. I know they've received a few comments. They received one from Pam and from myself. And we're going to have to do some more in the future. But for now, I think there's some pressure to get something out right now. So I would like a motion. Uh, who, is the chair supposed to sign this? Who's supposed to sign it? I was not a hundred percent clear on that.
I think you are better off with more signatures on a letter like this with the town, names of the towns. Yeah.
So all the members of the school committee should be signing this, is that correct?
You know, I wonder if we could do it on behalf, you could sign it on behalf of the school committee with the names and towns of the members listed. So that you don't have to go running around trying to get everybody's signature. That'll take a week.
Okay, and we will, uh, uh, very good. So that's what we will do. The chair, uh, so the idea is we're going to put a motion on the table in a minute. The motion will be to sign, for the chair to, uh, sign this letter on behalf of the full school committee with the names of the towns of all the school committees included with the letters. That be the correct motion?
Yep.
Would somebody like to move that, please?
They're moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Uh, question. Uh, so are we going to be sending it to all our legislative delegations as well?
Alice.
So the letter was written by Ford, edited by me, and then edited by Steve Sherrick and the lobbyist who's working for Mava. Um, I think it should go to all of your town boards of selectmen and, and the your senators and your reps, but I think for many of the senators, um, including my own, uh, they want a phone call too. My state senator said he had not had any communications by phone from anyone about this issue. I said, well, I know there are school committees that have sent you letters. He said, yeah, I'm sure they have, but he gets a lot of letters, right? Doesn't get a lot of phone calls, actually. So I had to go onto the web, look at his webpage, file a couple of requests via email to get on his calendar. He got me on his calendar. Um, I, he got to pick what time I wanted, and at exactly that time, he called me back and we spoke for half an hour. So you know, it really, it really was a valuable conversation and he actually changed his mind. So I recommend that you call, call them up.
Yeah, well, the reason, the reason I asked is I happen to have had a telephone conversation with Senator Eldridge, uh, the other day, who is really Pam's senator. He's not mine, but I, I knew him back in the day when I was, you know, the act in town manager and uh, you know, he was not really getting it, you know, he, 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 you know, he thinks it's way more fair with the lottery. So you know, I think, uh, we really need to make whatever effort is with the legislative delegation.
Yep.
Uh, we are going to, uh, make a, another request. I'm sure that you enjoyed the request to get all the superintendent contracts. I know that a lot of people said that was so much fun. They loved doing it. I think we're going to send another formal request to the school committee members to contact your representatives, your senator, and probably your select board. And have conversations with all of them and I, and other people that Alice can dig up that would be smart for you to talk to. Or anybody else can dig up. So I think that we're going to formally send that out to all the school committee members. And the other thing that was on my mind, and I don't know if this makes sense or not, would be invite all these characters to a breakfast at Minuteman to discuss the issue at some point. So that's the other kind of thing on my mind, if everybody would like to uh, see if they're willing to show up. Okay, so based on that, now let me see the hands. So we'll go Pam first and then Sarah.
Okay, um, Jeff, I understand you don't want to edit. You just want to get this out. I think particularly for the reasons that, um, Steve was just saying, and I know I had raised this earlier today, I really think that it's important for us to say that Minuteman, you know, is doing very, very well with the, um, admitting the protected classes better than our town, the percentages in our towns, so that they understand that, like, they keep hearing that this is a big problem. For them to know that you don't need a lottery to solve that, that problem. So I, I think that if we even just have a sentence and, you know, I, I think Kevin had drafted something. I think it would go a long way for some of our legislators who have been listening to the other side talk about the benefits of a lottery for a long time.
I think that Pam, in order to make that work, we would have to demonstrate that a significant percentage of the vote schools are generally under those guidelines. It's more, a lot more complicated than just saying Minuteman is doing a good job. That's just one school out of, I don't know how many. So I think it's a more complicated argument to get that point across that in general, they're doing pretty, most of them are doing pretty good. So you can add a sentence there saying how great Minuteman is doing, but I would not be convinced if I was one of them and I saw that. I said, that's one school out of how many?
It's a school in their own districts, and I think that they would listen to that. You know, we're talking to individual legislators. So I think it makes a difference.
Sarah.
Um, yes, I agree that it would be great for all of us to contact our particular representatives, both locally and at the state level. I want to also let the folks on this call know that all of us have, on the school committee have reviewed this letter that we're talking about, and we've seen it ahead of this call. So we know what the substance is, we know what the issues are. And if any, uh, participant on this call doesn't know the issues, just do a Google on what's going on with the legislation and you can keep yourself up to speed. The other constituency in the spirit of improving communications across all constituencies, which is something that we're all keen on, I would argue that there's some merit, once we have the final letter that is sent from the chair with the names and representatives of the town committee, that we provide, um, Katie Bouchard with the letter that she can share with the Minuteman Parent Association, and they can get that letter out to the parent community. I know her letter will be public, but just another mechanism to include the, the parents, I think, would be helpful.
Yeah, and they could call their state, state senators too.
Alice. Who else had a hand up where I missed because I was scanning? Charlene.
I was sort of going to piggyback on what Pam said. Um, when these legislatures are making, uh, new laws, oftentimes they are painting with a wide brush, and I think putting in some of the statistics from Minuteman showing that this legislation will be overly broad and will actually, um, circumvent what they're trying to achieve in our circumstance, that perhaps a wiser course of action would be, you know, allowing the commissioner or the, yeah, the commissioner, the discretionary authority, if he doesn't already have it, to invoke a lottery in underperforming schools. But it's schools that are performing and who are, um, actually admitting students that are in highest need. A lottery is going to be counterintuitive.
Okay, but if you want to add that argument, that would require more significant editing than just saying a sentence there about Minuteman's, which means you have to either give it back to the committee and say, this is what you want to do, and just send it out when you're done without us looking at it again, or call us together for another meeting, and that'll delay it going out, is my concern. We're going to go to Maggie.
I just wanted to say that I support the letter as is. I think all the points that have been mentioned before in the last couple minutes are, are great, and I think those are great points to put in the conversations that we have with legislators and other officials. I think the cost of not sending the letter now is too high to do major editing going forward. And I also was wondering, are we going to put this in local papers or submit it to the newspapers like the Globe or local newspapers?
Alice. Do you have your hand up? Yes?
I was just going to say, we can send this letter. It's not the last letter we send. We can send another letter. I mean, we can send this letter and then say, you know, here's a very Minuteman specific example and use your points, Jeff, and Pam's points and so forth to get really into the weeds on our details and our history and how hard it was for us to get, at the time, sixteen towns to get together so we wouldn't have to close our school. And what a lottery would have meant for that. We could get into that in a separate letter. It's a different thing. But I think we should just approve this letter, get people making phone calls, and then if we want to write another letter, then we can do that.
So the, what Alice is referring to is my comment, and I said, don't bother changing the letter now because we need to get it out. My comment was, uh, to help people remember that we originally had sixteen member towns. And we were having a big fight over the expense of renovating or replacing our school. And it took ten years, over ten years, to build a political coalition to agree to build a new school. And it required us losing seven of our sixteen member towns because they didn't want to pay. Because the method of creating spaces for career tech schools, the financial system is fragile. And if they throw in a element in which towns do not have the, any idea of how many students they're going to be able to send, then that nine would not have been nine. It would have been probably zero. And we would have lost six hundred and fifty slots for vocational education permanently. Now, that's the idea that I want to add to it, but there is no way to do that in a short timeframe. Pam's idea, on the other hand, just putting a sentence in there with the statistics of Minuteman, that does not require major editing or us having to get back together again. You can simply add to the motion the idea of a sentence explaining the Minuteman statistics on this and allowing the people drafting the letter to make that change and send it out without it coming back to this committee. So we wanted to do that, we could. That would not require major editing. Everything else would require major editing. And we would have to come back to us. And Alice believes no.
I don't think it's worth the time. It's that several days of back and forth emails between a few people and Mava. And it's already on letterhead. It's ready to go out. We could actually just do this and um, since Senator Eldridge hadn't read the letter that we, that the other committee had sent him, he probably isn't going to see. They get a lot of mail, you know? What are the odds that they're going to read it and then see that sentence? It's low. The, you know, I, I just don't think it's worth it to spend the time right now. Another letter. Do another letter.
I agree. Let's get it out. We can always follow.
Well, we have a motion on the table. Uh, we could bring the motion to a vote unless there's more comments on it. Pam, I think that she wants to speak again.
Yeah, and you know, I they're more apt to look at something if it's talking about something local. I don't think it's going to be a lot of work. I'm happy to do the work to do it. Um, you know, the copy we got, and I'm not sure why it would need to go to Mava if it's from us. So maybe there's something I don't understand. I don't see it that it's signed by Mava. Um, so, but if it's just coming to us, I would recommend that we make it as local and applicable to Minuteman as possible, and that is more apt to get the attention
Erica.
It needs.
I do agree with Pam. I think just adding one line with the statistics, I feel like uh, reading, like, when I read the letter, it's very well written. It's got really good points, but it is missing, I think, that key inform, that key statistic, right? That Minuteman is a, has more, a higher percentage of, of students of those protected class than the sending district. So I mean, I think that's key because it is a, a very valuable statistic that adds a lot to the argument.
Well, then you can make a motion to amend the motion on the table.
Okay, I'll make a motion to amend it. Okay, to add a line to the letter. Uh, in, that would include the statistic of, um, number of students in protected class, in the protected classes uh, that are currently enrolled in Minuteman as, uh, in comparison to the, to the sending district. I know it's a little bit convoluted, but.
And the authors don't have to come back to us. You're going to trust them to write this one sentence, add this one sentence. Is that the motion? The amended motion? Do I have a second on the amended motion?
A second.
Alice.
On behalf of the authors, which is me and Ford, um, it would be us adding the sentence, right? And, um, I'm sure that Ford and I are willing to add a sentence that says, you know, thirty-nine percent sped versus seventeen percent sped in the towns. I can do it tomorrow. I actually don't have time, but I will do it tomorrow if you want. I just think it's, I'm sorry, but it is just not worth it, but I will do it.
Further discussion on the amended, on the amendment to the motion. Very well then, roll call vote. Pam.
Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Sarah Montague Arlington, yes.
Erica Elsie Bolton, yes.
Steve Willdo Concord, yes.
Maggie Sharon Dover, yes.
Charlie Cabral Lancaster, yes.
Sharon Musto Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulven Needham, yes.
Alice Stukascho abstained.
Now we come to the main motion. That was just on the amendment. The main motion is, of course, to send the letter. Any further discussion on the main motion? Very well then, bring it to a vote. Pam.
Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Sarah Montague Arlington, yes.
Erica Elsie Bolton, yes.
Steve Willdo Concord, yes.
Maggie Sharon Dover, yes.
Charlie Cabral Lancaster, yes.
Sharon Musto Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulven Needham, yes.
Alice Stukascho, yes.
That's very exciting. I don't have to often, you know, do an amendment to a motion, so that's very exciting for me. Chair. We don't do that that often here. All right. Principals report. Katie Bouchard.
Great. Thanks. Right, can y'all see the PowerPoint?
Yes.
Yes. Great. Yep. All right. Thank you all. Uh, we're going to start, uh, tonight with, uh, River Riley, um, our student reps. Uh, so we'll start off with Riley, um, who's going to tell us about the March Madness volleyball tournament, uh, the class of two thousand twenty-five fundraisers uh, in the Neon Lights Dance. And then, um, River is going to tell us about the trivia night, the Senior Adventure and Leadership Sale Conference. So Riley, it's yours.
So our March Madness volleyball tournament has turned into an annual tradition. This will be our second year doing this event, and it started last year. So it's going to be taking place on March twelfth from three to five PM. Each team can consist of one teacher or staff member and two students. Uh, it'll be in the gym, and we even will have a student or staff referee and use the scoreboard. It is fifteen dollars per team, and all the funds will go towards our class activities and prom, and there will also be concessions sold.
Great.
So we actually just finalized these fundraisers today, so I'm super excited. We're hosting two fundraisers, one for Panera Bread and Chipotle that will go to the class of two thousand twenty-five. On March, you can show your support by visiting Panera Bread in Bedford. Twenty percent of all the sales will go to the class of two thousand twenty-five if you use the promo code at checkout. And then on April twenty-fourth, we're having a Chipotle fundraiser. And so all twenty-five percent of sales will go to the class of two thousand twenty-five when using the promo code online or in store. And this week, flyers will be going to the Lincoln and Lexington PD thanks to our class advisor, Ms. Copperthorne. So please feel free to share these flyers with any friends or family.
Uh, so we will be having our trivia night. Uh, the class of two thousand twenty-six and two thousand twenty-seven are hosting a trivia night the fifteenth, this Thursday, with our host, Mr. Marshall. Um, it will be after school from three forty-five to five forty-five PM in the Student Union. And folks will be quizzed on movies, TV, pop culture, and finish the lyrics. Um, there will be cool prizes awarded to the winner, and each, uh, team can be of five players. Students can include one teacher, or the teachers and admin can have their own team. It is ten dollars per team, and snacks and soda will be sold. And so Skills USA had their annual Sales Senior Ventures and Leadership Conference, which Minuteman brought out six of their students, including myself. And this is a bit, this was a very cool conference where, uh, Skills USA joined a bunch of, uh, technical school graduates to talk about going out to the field, getting ready to leave high school, go into college. So they had a few courses, um, that they discussed such things as real world ready, where they talked about going to college, or the work field, and, uh, student loans and such. They had a finance, uh, little course with one of our Minuteman graduates who graduated from automotive, but went to do business after, and now has her finance business. Um, and that was a really good, great, great, um, lecture that she had. There was one about, um, uh, networking, and I am blinking on the last one. But it was great. It was at Gillette Stadium, so we got to, to get a good view up, up from above. Um, and we, at the end, we all graduated from Skills USA and got some, uh, medals for our leadership, uh, knowledge and leadership. Yeah, those, it was great.
The Neon Dance is that Riley.
That's right.
Sorry, I changed it.
No worries.
So the class of two thousand twenty-six and two thousand twenty-seven will be hosting a Neon Nights Dance on March fifteenth. It'll be from six to nine PM. And and fifteen dollars per person. Um, with a concession sold, so snacks and ticket sales start tomorrow.
Great. Awesome. Um, any questions for River Riley or any of the events they presented on?
I think you all are getting extremely creative with these fundraisers that are going to be successful because they're fun and they're engaging, so I wish you well. And River, congratulations and on your graduation from Skills or your official last gathering, and wish you well moving forward. Thanks for sharing this. I really appreciate them.
Sharon.
Yeah, um, just a question on the two fundraising nights. I know that you said that the Panera was the Panera in Bedford. Is there a particular Chipotle, or is it any Chipotle in the area?
Um, the Chipotle one, I believe, is also in Bedford.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody I'm missing on the school committee? I just want to know who's Kay Sizzle. How'd you find your DJ?
Um, that's a great question. Um, I actually don't know who Kay Sizzle is.
They, they come recommended from Ms. Copperthorne. Uh, she has seen, uh, the DJ at numerous events that she's been.
Got it. Thank you. Good sign.
Yes. Great. Um, so just the next thing, uh, we need a, uh, vote for a change in the school calendar. So it's, uh, it actually says two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five on the agenda. It should be twenty-three to twenty-four. It's the end of this, uh, school year. Uh, but we're looking to change May thirtieth and thirty-first, um, from format one, which means that um, nine and eleven are in academics to a format two, which puts ten and twelve in academics. Um, and the reason for that is that we have Science MCAS that first week in June. Um, so we'd like to see the students again right before the MCAS to do a little bit more review um, before they test that first week. So we're looking for a vote to approve the change of those two calendar days to the opposite format.
Okay, who'd like to make the motion? Alice.
Uh, second.
Great. Any discussion?
So Katie, that was just, it was, oh, it was a, um, a split week, but now we're making it a solid week. Is that correct?
Um, so it's the last week in May. It's a holiday week, so it's four weeks of the blue, and we're switching it half blue, half yellow.
Okay, so we're making it a split week. Okay.
Yep. And it's after, uh, seniors are done, so it wouldn't impact fall off at all, which is nice.
Great. Thank you.
That's a terrifying thought, the part of the year when the seniors are all done, right? Wow, okay.
They're looking forward to it, I'm sure.
Oh, I bet. I remember the one foot in the school, one foot out of the school part of the year.
Yep.
That's terror teaching them at that point, by the way. Any further discussion of the motion on the table? Very well, bring it to a roll call vote. Pam.
Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Sarah Montague Arlington, yes.
Erica Elsie Bolton, yes.
Steve Willdo Concord, yes.
Maggie Sharon Dover, yes.
Charlie Cabral Lancaster, yes.
Sharon Musto Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulven Needham, yes.
Alice Stukascho, yes.
Very good. Admissions update.
Hello. Uh, awesome. Thank you, Katie. You can go to the first line. Thanks. Great, thank you. Sorry you're driving for me, but I'll do the talking. So we're wrapping up our industry interviews this week as the priority deadline is two fifteen, so Thursday. Um, as you'll see, our numbers are down from last year. Uh, that's not without its roadblocks. Uh, more so, I'm going to say.
Uh, more so, I'm going to say is a speed bump. We've hit quite a few speed bumps, cuz we've persisted through them all. Um, from a new high school opening in our largest sending district to some unfavorable P R, to really an application system that has done nothing but hinder parents getting access to us. So we've had these challenges specifically with our application system that have really made us have to, you know, look at everything differently, including our data. So to compare our data, you'll see two numbers on there. Um, that, if you can, uh, on the bottom, so, but the numbers are a little different. So we had last year really looked at numbers, and again, I wasn't here, but um, that were accumulative of all of the numbers. So that three twenty-nine number was looked at. Now, what we kind of drew from that was actually forty-seven people had um, withdrawn at that time. You know, without even being accepted. So our numbers, and this is due to the system, have really forced us to remove people who no longer want to participate. So we're really looking at interest versus overall application numbers due to the system, which is good end, right? Um, so even from the time that we put this information in here, the two-ten for our in district numbers, we actually got another application just a few moments ago. So we're actually at two-eleven as we got an application from, I believe it was Concord. Um, so things are going, and what I don't want people to worry about is that the spirit of Minute Live, Minuteman is very much alive. As you'll see, those on the left are quotes from students who we interviewed. Um, they're very touching. These students have been amazing that we've interviewed. We also just received, Madison just texted me, we received an email. Um, I chatted with a student yesterday, just in the hall as we were leaving. We received an application today. So, you know, that one-on-one time, just taking the time, listening, talking to students, has really made a difference. So, you know, in December, we had ninety-five applicants. I believe that was the last time I had uh, presented to you, and that was really, um, thank you to Charlene for calling out how difficult the system was. So I had mentioned we were going to do a lot of marketing, you know, updates, a lot of things like that. What we first did was went to the application system, removed one roadblock, which it was a two-step system. We made it a one-step system. We then sent out reminder postcards early, reminding parents of the impending deadline. We sent follow-ups to all of our principals, to our guidance counselors at the middle schools. So we could get in their newsletters, so we could make sure any kind of weekly updates we could be part of. We did multiple social media posts, not just on our own social media, which you might have seen, but also in community pages. Um, we also did a mass email to every single eighth grade student um, in our sending districts. So we hit the ground running. Um, we made sure that those roadblocks were speed bumps. And I am forever grateful for the hard work and dedication of Madison Horner, who is the assistant for marketing and admissions. Because together, we persevered through all of this. Um, but she just continues to provide so much support to the office and to the admissions process. Uh, she's truly the brains behind the office. And obviously, we're so grateful for Anthony's guidance on a daily, as we shout to his office um, from our desks for the support that we have. But uh, we're feeling really confident in our number. The interest is there. Um, we've been working, you know, very hard with um, John and Kevin to make sure that, you know, we are ready because two-ten with two hundred and ten students, two hundred and eleven students, very interested. That's, that's great. So um, you know, I'm happy to take questions and comments before we move forward to kind of discuss out of district.
Sharon.
Uh, so just to clarify, um, last year we had three hundred and twenty-nine applicants, and how many did we take?
Um, we accepted two, nope, I'm sorry, we accepted one eighty was the number that we were reaching. So it was one eighty that we accepted.
And this year's, we're looking at one eighty as well?
Correct.
Okay, so we could have, if, if all of the interested are acceptable, and then we take the one eighty, we could be looking at a small waiting list compared to a larger one. Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Who else's hand did I see? I saw another hand up.
Sarah, me.
Sarah.
I'm, I'm not worried about the numbers getting to where you want them. I will just add, there's so much power in the storytelling from a student perspective, and I know that, that level of storytelling I see all over the place. So I would encourage you, and I'm, I appreciate your shout out about uh, Madison's work. I would encourage you, you know, if you're feeling anxious about, you know, why aren't we getting, hearing from them? Think about the power of the storytelling from a student perspective, the students that will still be in the building when, you know, these incoming students arrive. But that would be my advice as a former parent of a Minuteman student. And uh, a member of the school committee, and a marketing, I'm a marketing person too.
Thank you, Sarah.
So uh, my question is, um, should we dump this system?
Thank you for asking that question. Um, I am being very thoughtful about how we approach our next year. Um, I wasn't part of the vetting process. What I, I come from a corporate background, so I sometimes do approach things with a very corporate view, which is, you know, fire fast, and the, they are not working for us. Um, but there are some wins that we have from a planning for showcase day point of view. And I don't want to jump into another system and really leave ourselves stuck on some other pieces. I will say the I T department and Drew O'Conners has saved our lives with things that weren't, were promised to Madison and Anthony previously that could be built in this new system. And they then turned around and said they could not build it. So we have built it in December with Drew um, over vacation and in a separate system. So we're using two different systems, not really great for our middle schools. We're asking them to, you know, switch um, not just from the old system that they were used to, but switch to a new system for the applications, and then use another application, uh, system for records and reviews. And, and so it's been a little bit of a difficult process in smoothing things over with the middle schools there. But I really wanna be thoughtful on how we approach getting out of any kind of contract and where we go next. Because I don't want us to be in a similar situation of really good salespeople selling us bad goods. So I am taking, uh, Kevin has been working with me and Madison, and we are, you know, really being thoughtful about what our next move will be with Blackbaud.
My, my comment is, I've been a programmer since nineteen seventy. I've seen billions of systems. And when you have people who are losers in the sense of they, they don't deliver at a time what is critical for you. You don't, you gotta dump them. You gotta uh, stop throwing the good money after the bad.
Thank you for this.
That's where I would go. Alice.
Um, when does the new Arlington High School open?
It will be open for next school year.
So could that be part of the reason what happened in Arlington?
We have heard from families. I had a lot of families come for open house. I stood near the door to make sure I greeted everyone on the way in and made sure I had a conversation with them on the way out. And a lot of the families from Arlington said, we just wanted to see Minuteman, but we will be going to the new high school. Um, so, and a lot of, I had an Arlington student, uh, Lucas standing with me in the front of the building. So trying to grab those Arlington students and sway them, and that new high school. It is, it is a pull.
Okay, and so the other thing I, I'm looking at the, you know, what are the, where the big changes, so. And then the Shoba District, Stowe and Lancaster are down a lot. But I can't tell, from what you said, the three twenty-nine number is is a number that includes a lot of people who are never gonna apply, uh, complete, is that right?
Right, they were never going to move forward with Minuteman anyway. So the two eighty-two, if you see on the bottom, it says total two fifteen um, deadline. That two eighty-two is a more robust number. We removed those forty-seven people who had, you know, said they would withdraw.
Okay, so those two are not that different probably from the number of kids who actually came from those two towns. Um, is there any other thing happening in Lexington of interest, or, I mean?
Not that I have been aware. We did chat with, um, I've been meeting with all of the principals when we go for our interviews. And seeing what could we do better, what were, you know, anything I could do better. Um, they did resoundingly say that my, my presentation and the way I worked the ambassadors in was so dynamic, and the students were so excited for it. But then we do that in September and October, and then there's a lull, and they're, you know, town high school comes in to present. Um, and so they were thinking, maybe I come back. And I said, I'll do whatever you want. I think in Lexington, I had a really great conversation with both principals about coming and speaking to the M P A, to their um, parent association. And really trying to change, and you know, this is something as a marketer that I feel really strongly about, is trying to change perception. And good marketing solves a problem, and I think we have two problems we, you know, should be solving, and that's being in this role for the first year. It's something I've been uncovering, but um, one is changing perception of who is here, who are, who is the Minuteman community. And the second largest piece I've uncovered is friendships. And how we can show that our students make friends, keep, keep their old friends and make the new. So those are two stories I'd love to tell next year, and as I already mentioned, using students, using those bonds, using um, especially our ambassadors are such great tools, you know, they're so wonderful. And how we can use them and use their friends who maybe aren't ambassadors, but are just wonderful, that they're wonderful stories to tell. So I think those are things that I'd really like to focus on next year. Um, and that's something that with those principals in Lexington, we chatted about deeply. And I'm starting to go there in April.
Alice, again.
Um, there's one other thing that I'm, that doesn't apply until next year. But there's a group of kids who waited in the kindergarten year, the beginning of the COVID epidemic. And went, they didn't go the first, they, they stayed back. They didn't go to school. So if you actually look at the numbers from the towns, it might be worth looking at the cohort coming up from the kindergartens.
Sure.
Then, now for the two thousand twenty-nine year.
Sure.
Um, just because there may be a s- a shortfall, and then the following year, there would be more kids. I just think it's, I just remembered that I'm, I was keeping this in the back of my mind for when it came up, so I just wanna mention it.
Thank you. That's great to keep in mind, and I will definitely have a look at that.
And Sarah.
Uh, just one final note that I'm hearing directly to people that I, in Arlington, that I run into when I'm out walking my dog, Makeo. And they know that I'm on the school committee. I'm hearing a couple of different things. Um, a lot of interest and passion about Minuteman. Sometimes there's, their decisions um, lately for folks that were thinking both have been related to sports. And in particular, if there's a, a child who seems to be very proficient in soccer and likely to make the Arlington freshman team, which evidently is very competitive, they're gonna try that track. And so I just listen and nod, and I, I wanna say, I'm not hearing any concerns related to any reputational issues. I'm hearing, wow, the Arlington High School really needed that, that renovation, and, and now it's done, and it looks lovely. And, you know, these, these people are sort of making decisions around some sports stuff, so um, just sharing that, that, again, not anecdotal, right to me, people running into me while I'm walking the dog.
Thank you.
Very well, time to move on. Next slide.
Next slide. So our out of district um, remains high. Interest in Minuteman across the board is, you know, our reputation precedes us. We, it's very strong. Um, so we have forty-seven completed out of district applications. These families have followed up with us multiple times. Um, but we have about nineteen that we feel are viable uh, chapter seventy-fours. Based on past approvals from these districts. It doesn't mean, you know, we're ready to go this way, just, we're, we're prepping. Um, so we know that, you know, these approvals for the chapter seventy-fours would need to be sent, and we send them around April first. And then we would know by mid-April where we stand there. Um, just wanna highlight, the Hanscom Air Force Base is not included in those nineteen. Reason being, the families have been, you know, calling us, they've been very adamant, speaking with us. They're just not sure where on base they're going to be living. So that really would determine that for them. Um, so they're staying in touch with us almost weekly, uh, which we love. And they are just going to let us know once they get settled, and they should be here in the spring. Um, but we'll be moving forward, gathering our out of district records and setting up those interviews in just the next three weeks.
Look at that Foxborough number.
They love Minuteman. They have their own Facebook page.
Well, they are.
They love it enough to stay.
Right.
Yeah, and they are part of the, you know, A B school system. It's one, one school system, back to Foxborough.
Okay, very good. I see no more hands up.
Great. Uh, so now, we'll talk about Winter Wonderland. Um, so the first slide is where we started with Winter Wonderland. I believe the last time uh, Katie got to present to you. This is what, you know, we had as the idea. Uh, you can go to the next slide, Katie. The next slide is really where we went with the branding. So we worked with our D V C seniors. Um, Aria did the logo, and then we had Leah do our gift certificates. Connor did our golden ticket, and we really, they worked with our co-op, Sydney Judd, uh, who does multimedia. And so we worked all together to really establish this kind of brand identity for what Winter Wonderland can be. So this was our look and feel. Um, it was really great. It was really amazing to work with the kids and get that chance to really make this event a holistic Winter Wonderland with its own logo that will live on forever. Um, you can go to the next slide. And this is what we did with the advertising. So, super exciting, I know. Um, so to get the word out, we engaged with our M P A. And I like to call them our marketing street team. It was Madison and I. And we posted flyers in libraries, Y M C As, local businesses. The M P A really got out there and posted flyers for us. It was amazing. Um, we did a boosted event post on Facebook for only seventy-five dollars. We did a paid advertising post on Eventbrite for seventy-five dollars. Um, those ran for a month. We also did a placement in Boston Central, which lists for families, events that are happening in your area. Um, and then multiple follow-up posts on both our own social channels, which I'm sure you saw, and then in uh, committee groups. Um, and we, you know, boasted about our raffles and the games and the events. We had a lot of success um, with our Facebook posts. As you can see, we reached close to twelve thousand people looked at our post. It resulted in three hundred and seventy-eight clicks on the ticketing site. So we really were doing something right here. I think the timing was great. It was after the holidays. Uh, we ended up, it was a freezing cold day, so families were looking to bring their children inside. Um, and if you go to slide four, Katie. The results of our hard work is that we raised three thousand three hundred and fifty-eight dollars to be split between the M P A scholarships and the Minuteman scholarships. So a huge thank you to Sarah Ard, Katie Bouchard, the M P A, Courtney M. Menosky, in particular, who were at every meeting with us. Really pushing us in the right direction, getting those raffles, getting that hot chocolate sponsorship. Uh, Madison Horner, of course, and then all of the teachers who said yes to coming and helping on a Saturday. And all of the students who trusted me and said, yes, this will be fun. I'll do it for minimum wage. And it'll be a really great event. Um, and even bigger shout out to our co-op student, Sydney Judd, who volunteered for the entire time to get her National Honor Society hours. She stayed late with me to decorate on Friday. Before Winter Wonderland, she stayed late with me on Saturday to clean up. And all during this time, she also went and took her driver's test and passed, and I just wanna make that a public note, because that is a big accomplishment. Um, but this is the community that I came back for, and I'm excited to show the class of two thousand twenty-eight.
Do I see that River would like to make a comment?
I, I would. I absolutely loved Winter Wonderland. Me and my friend Dakota put a lot of money in the raffles. Um, with, with the hope that it will come back to us. It will, um, so, but it was fun. So even, even for families, the students that, that went, they, they had a good time.
And, and did she, River, did she pay you to say that? Nice comment, or was that just?
I, look, I'm all for Ms. Norson to hu- pump her up. I loved it. I, I'm saying this out of my g- good old heart.
Okay, Sharon.
And so I brought my younger child and his um, friend to the event, and they absolutely loved it. I had no idea my son liked reptiles, but having those reptiles for show and for holding the snake and everything, that was lovely. I had no idea he liked those, but he turned to um, to somebody, I don't remember if it was Courtney or someone, and just said that this was the best event ever and that we have to do it again next year. He absolutely loved it. And Katie, I like the fact that you put your twin on the middle of this slide here, so that, that was the everybody thought that Ms. Bouchard was like, wait, didn't I just see you? Wait, did you change? everybody thought that Ms. Bouchard was like, wait, didn't I just see you? Wait, did you change your clothes? Um, because her.
Everyone thought I was working double time. It was funny.
It was very funny. I definitely did a double take when I walked by your sister.
Sarah.
Um, I just want to applaud you because I think your return on investment is phenomenal here. And I think you all, you all have built collectively and I love, I love how the whole community was involved. And I think you've built a really great playbook to be able to replicate this year after year after year. So bravo to everybody.
Since this is a money issue, Steve has a comment.
My only, my only comment is that I, that I see a pet boa in the Musto family household in the future.
He asked if we could get rid of our cats so that he could have a boa.
A boa will take care of the cat. No problems.
All right. Katie, is that the end of the principal's report?
It is.
Okay, thank you very much. And on that, we do go to Steve Ladue and he has a lot of work to do tonight.
Yes, yeah. So uh, the finance committee met um, last Monday, right before our, our special meeting and interview with the superintendent candidates. Um, so uh, the first item, the uh, second quarter general fund report, we did not have a chance to review. All three members have seen the report, but we didn't get a chance to take a vote and recommend. So um, I, I think we're all comfortable with it, but uh, there's no recommendation with that. But I will turn it over to whomever to uh, walk us through it.
Hi, I will be taking everyone through the financial report, so.
Okay, so Nikki is whoever tonight. Very good.
A quick question. Do we want to just remind folks that are on this video call with us? Who are the committee members on the finance subcommittee?
Okay.
Is that useful to share that again?
That's fine. There's three of us. Uh, uh, Steve Willdo from Concord is the chair. Uh, then we have uh, and we have Sarah Montague from Arlington and Jeff Stulven from Needham. That's our finance subcommittee.
Thank you, Steve.
Okay, um, so I, I'm Nikki Andrade, the business manager, just um, anyone isn't familiar. Um, this is our general fund report that we put together every quarter just to update you on um, the budget that you vote every year. Um, so how it's laid out uh, is by function code. Over here is our labels. And that is what the school committee kind of looks at and votes the budget based on these categories. The first column is the sum of our budget. So you'll see here, you know, this is the total budget of what FY twenty four was. These are any budget adjustments and what our budget, you know, ends up being. So that shows, you know, the adjustments come from one to the other. Any budget adjustment over ten thousand dollars um, between function codes is brought to the school committee to approve. This next column is our year-to-date expenses. So you'll see of our thirty million dollar budget, we've spent um, right around almost fourteen million. And we have fourteen million encumbered. That means there has been a purchase order um, that's gone run through the system. Um, it just hasn't been paid yet if we're um, waiting to receive the items or um, an expected expense through June thirtieth. Um, and that will leave us with um, a remaining balance. So um, as far as, you know, the second quarter report goes, um, this is through December thirty first. So we are looking um, you know, pretty well, we have about um, seven percent unencumbered. Um, the one line that we'll have a, a budget um, transfer request for is for our guidance function twenty seven ten. Um, through the CBA, they do have some three extra contracted days. That wasn't necessarily um, budgeted within this function code and it was um, within the teacher function code. So that's more of a reclassification. Um, the only other line that you'll see um, is negative here is our um, copier printer line. Um, and we'll bring that forward in third quarter to do a budget transfer. Um, but what we're seeing is now that we're kind of fully in school, ramped up a bit more, um, we are getting uh, additional invoices for um, paper, um, like extra prints. Um, so additional copies. So that's um, a big reason I sat with um, Drew O'Conners. We went through the invoices together. Um, so that's the reason that line is over budget. We budgeted um, our lease payments, um, but we're getting some additional um, clicks, I guess, in prints that um, we get charged per print. So uh, we'll bring that back to you um, in third quarter because we will have to add a printer copier to twenty mill street as well. So we wanted to just do that all at once. Um, and happy to answer any questions on this report.
Alice.
I'm just curious, how much does paper print charge per copy?
Um, a color copy is four cents and a black and white copy is point zero zero four cents.
Thank you.
Um, no further questions, no voters required on this item. This is informational.
Correct.
However, we will need to vote now from this next.
So um, if we're comfortable, I'll move to the vote. Um, it, it is what I had described as this um, budget transfers over ten thousand dollars. We do bring it to the finance and school committee um, for a vote. Um, it's to properly reclassify the um, three extra guidance days per the CBA into the proper function code to cover.
Hey, could I have a motion uh, as written to perform the transfer from account twenty seven ten to twenty three oh five?
So moved. Uh, I just want to point out this, uh, the finance committee has reviewed and recommended.
And for the discussion on this item. Roll call vote, Pam.
Um, Nurse Acton, yes.
Sarah Montague, Arlington, yes.
Erica Elsie Bolton, yes.
Steve Willdo, Concord, yes.
Maggie Sharon Dover, yes.
Charlie Cabral Lancaster, yes.
Sharon Musto Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulven Needham, yes.
Alice Lucrestow, yes.
And we had um, one more write-up um, in budget transfer that we are recommending. Uh, we wanted to bring it to your attention now as it's something that we did within the FY twenty five budget that we thought would make sense to replicate in the FY twenty four budget as well. Um, you know, when we are looking a little bit closer at our chapter seventy funds and our foundation enrollment, um, we realized that a portion of the chapter seventy aid um, is due to the post-secondary students um, that MTI program um, brings in. So we are recommending um, the same allocation and methodology as we did in the FY twenty four, uh, FY twenty five budget that we applied to the FY twenty four budget. So we um, have a, a little calculation here. Our chapter seventy aid divided by our foundation enrollment um, kind of gives us a per pupil amount or how much chapter seventy aid we get um, per student. And we are recommending allocating um, that amount times four because there was four post-secondary students to help support the MTI program. Um, that total would be nineteen thousand two hundred and eighty dollars.
And I have a motion to make the transfer from account uh, six two oh oh to two one one oh as written.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, finance committee recommends.
Roll call vote, Pam.
Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Sarah Montague, Arlington, yes.
Erica Elsie Bolton, yes.
Steve Ladue, Concord, yes.
Maggie Sharon Dover, yes.
Charlie Cabral Lancaster, yes.
Sharon Musto Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulven Needham, yes.
Alice Lucrestow, yes.
All right, cruising along. Uh, the next item is our revolving report. Um, so I'll again go through the columns um, just to familiarize people with this report as we only see it once a quarter. Over here are our revolving funds that we have. Um, this is internal um, that we use our department codes and the description of what each um, account within the fund um, is used for. Then we have our beginning balance um, as, you know, ending that, a revolving account. If you end um, a year with a certain fund, that is brought into the next year as the beginning balance. So we have a beginning balance, um, the revenues we've received through twelve thirty one and projected revenue through the end of the year. Uh, again, expenses through twelve thirty one and any encumbrances through the end of the year, which will get us to a projected ending balance. Um, so this first fund, community ed, this is uh, mostly just our summer school program runs through this account. Um, usually we receive a lot of that um, money before summer school starts um, in June. So it has a, had a pretty hefty um, beginning balance because of that. Um, and you'll see some of the expenses that were paid as summer school ran through July and August. Um, our MTI program, um, I've sat and worked with our director, um, Nancy Hool uh, to get a good um, budget in place um, for all of her programs. So this is the revenue she's collected for um, her auto program, Cosmo, Electrical and Plumbing, along with the projected revenue and then expenses and encumbrances. We are showing a small deficit here, but that um, recommended transfer we have to the MTI program should now cover that. And um, they will be in the positive. Our facilities rental, um, the most popular line that we like to look at, um, the, the athletic field line in the general um, rental line. Um, we broke out the athletic fields, whereas the general rental line includes um, the theater, the Paul Revere room, the, the basketball courts. Um, so we are projecting um, you know, a good amount of money through year end. Um, and we've collected um, about a hundred seventy seven thousand for our general and ninety thousand in athletic fields. Um, expecting about a hundred and fifty one thousand uh, for general rental and two hundred sixty five thousand for our athletic fields. Um, which is really great. And um, as Michelle Rosendez has presented um, in the past, we will um, be using um, some of that funding in creating a kind of like a reserve um, for future use of the field uh, for when we need to replace the turf um, in about ten years. Um, and out of this line, we will be funding um, our debt service to our member towns. Um, which was in FY twenty five approximately a hundred and thirteen thousand. Um, fund fourteen are all of our trade accounts. Um, these are all looking great, very healthy, no um, deficit balances. And we have our capital fee, which is part of our FY twenty five budget, our out-of-district um, tuition, which is also part of our twenty five budget. Um, these amounts we will be using to offset um, the member town assessments and the money that we collect next year. Um, we've talked about as, you know, there are less out-of-district students that are coming to Minuteman. Um, we will see the amounts in these accounts um, continuously decrease over the next two years. Um, and lastly, our, our food service program, um, you know, doing really well um, and still projecting a, a pretty uh, good balance from one forty to about two hundred thousand. Um, so that is, you know, the quick summary of our revolving reports and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Hey. I have two. The twenty mill street deficit, I assume that's because of the construction that we're doing for the transfer of the animal um, veterinary science. And we'll be hearing more about that later. Is that correct?
That's correct. Um, it was approved a thirty five thousand dollar budget.
Correct.
Um, and we do pay some small expenses on all of the buildings, um, Mill Street. Um, all the Mill Street buildings, ten, sixteen and twenty to keep um, the ele- electric on um, heat. So the, the pipes don't freeze. So you will see um, a small amount of expenses too, just to make sure that those buildings, um, there aren't any.
Another question is about food services. Now, uh, over my tenure here, the food so- services line item has gone wildly from crazy negative numbers to zero. And now we have a strong positive number. So my question is, uh, why is it a strong positive number? And do the kids like the current vendors you have? I know the answer I got to this previously was yes, it was a great improvement. So I'm just trying to see if it is still true that the kids really like the service that is provided. And if that, they're liking it, it's one of the reasons why we have a reasonably positive number there as opposed to some of the huge deficits we've seen at some time in the far past.
Sure. Um, I don't know if any of the students want to chime in um, on, on their input. I've heard um, great things about um, Fresh Picks. Um, but you know, if any of the students wanted to um, you know, speak up on, as to their experience, um, I can address your other question on why we're seeing some um, surpluses. We do have the free meals um, as part of the Massachusetts budget. So um, there's a free meal for students, um, their first meal. And if they wanted um, an additional meal, they'll have to pay. So we get reimbursed from the state based on the meals. So, you know, we will see um, more revenue um, than expected because of the, I guess, um, the state aids surrounding that. Um, the second piece is we do have some supply chain assistance grants um, that were allowed to offset some of our costs on. Um, what's eligible for those grants, um, we've gotten four rounds of them um, between five to fifteen thousand dollars. Um, but it's, it's food um, that isn't processed. So tomatoes, lettuce, milk. Um, so we can offset some of the costs um, that Fresh Picks has with some of those grants.
Aaron, and then Maggie.
I will say that um, just to tell you about the food, the kids talk about the food in their presentations to the middle school. So I'm assuming they like it. Um, they talk often about the burrito bar. They sell it like in a very high way. So I've heard good things, a majority of, from the students about the food. I think they had already jumped off the call, so I just wanted to give Fresh Picks like a little bit of a shout out. They do a nice job.
And Maggie.
Um, I, I just wanted to chime in. As you may know, I'm also um, sit on the regional school board in Dover. And we've seen a similar, um, I, I would say evening out to maybe a little bit of a surplus in our food. And, and we also attributed to the, the lunch being reimbursed by the state. And I, I think just beyond um, like the fact that it's helping programs stay afloat or grow, I, I think it's been a huge burden off of families, whether or not they're, you know, um, economically, you know, need the assistance, having that all situated and knowing that your kid can get lunch at school every day has been reported to us by families as being just a huge stress reliever for, for everybody involved. So um, just want to be appreciative for that and I'm glad it's working out for us.
You were saying that the state actually does some good programs sometimes. Is that what you're saying?
I, I want to thank them especially as a, as a former school teacher and school assistant principal who was in charge of our lunch and breakfast programs in the school when I was working there. Having it moved to free for everyone was just a massive culture shift and really helped to even the playing field and just remove so many stigmas and also make lunch just more accessible for everybody. I'm, I'm so grateful for that.
Hey, River.
Um, I will say, I, I do enjoy Fresh Picks. Um, most of the people enjoy some, the line, line, the line to get lunch builds up. Um, I will say, um, so people, people are enjoying it. Yeah.
That is not the comment that we've gotten many times in the past about the food service vendors here. That's.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yes.
Uh, Alice and then Katie.
So about sometime in the past year and a half, we heard a report that there were sometimes the last lunch that they had run out of certain items. And I want to know if that is a actual problem. And if it is an actual problem, is there any um, going to be any change to the contract for the next year to correct it if it's a problem?
I'm not sure if Michelle um, Rosendez is on.
I was just trying to raise my hand.
Oh, perfect. Um, I know that this issue came up and she might be able to give a little more detail on.
Yep, I can address this. Um, so Alice, yeah, we also um, had heard that comment. And um, we've addressed it with the food service director who has, and I, it's probably been two weeks now, um, since we've talked to her about making sure that the fourth lunch has the same amount of picks and availability of food as everyone else. And I do think that it has improved. Um, she admittedly um, had said that that's something that she is working on and, you know, just getting the number right and not wanting to waste. Had said that that's something that she is working on and, you know, just getting the number right and not wanting to waste food. Um, was kind of the concern, but um she is uh improving that and working forward. To to ensure that they have the same availability of picks.
Thank you, that is great.
Right, and Katie.
Yeah, it's actually meeting with Kathleen Curry, our food service director the other day. Um, she said on a. Average day, we sell between, well, we give out between four hundred fifty and five hundred lunches, which is a huge percentage um of our student population. Um, also, there are a ton of kids will buy a second lunch, uh, if they want to pay for another meal, and then there's also additional snacks that you can add on. Um, so you do get your free meal, but then if you want all the goodies and ice cream and candy, not candy, but like chips and stuff along that goes along with it. Um, that does help generate a lot of revenue too.
Thank you.
Well, all I can say is that both from the dollar side and the uh customer satisfaction side. These things have both improved enormously from the past, and that doesn't happen that often in this world. Really, it's I've heard some, you know, well, I won't go into exactly what I've heard in the past, but this is terrific. So thank you all for your efforts in um in doing this, and thank the state for getting it at least a little bit right sometimes by accident, I guess.
Yeah, and I did see that that um it is proposed in this budget as well to cover it, so we'll certainly follow that um. Within the budget to see what happens, but um it's good to see it's in the initial round.
Okay, and kudos to our our current food service vendor. I've never had to say that before. Very good. Next report, I think.
Um, the next report is our student activities report. Um, this is the revenue that is generated by the students in the clubs. So you'll see here the um fund in the account, um, name. As well as the advisor that oversees the account. Um, we have beginning balances, again, revenues. Um, received, projected revenues, expenses, encumbrances, um, at least through January, and then our ending balance. Um, you'll see a majority of the activity is through the the class accounts. Um, they do, you know, work together to do some fundraising. Um, there has also been some fundraising done. Um, you know, through different athletic um programs. Um, this was a recommendation from the auditors to present this to the school committee. Um, there is additional controls around these accounts where uh it not only has to go through. The advisor, but three of the students that are part of the club have to sign off for any of the expenses to be approved. And then it goes through our s- our same process um in the business office and, you know, approved by the finance committee, so. Um, this is just for transparency and will be um emailed out to all the advisors as well. To ensure that they are comfortable and um around their balances and um are welcome to ask any questions, should they have any.
I see no questions.
Wonderful. All right, our next report um is our second quarter um bank reconciliation. Uh, this was the preferred report of the school committee in the past, so this report is put together by Lori Elliott, who is our treasurer. It includes um the balances um for each account and the interest earned. Um, so we work with her every month, um specifically, um, the assistant business manager Sonia Vitrona, who does a great job. Um, you know, reconciling the accounts. Um, and, you know, it's just a quick, um. You know, screenshot of, you know, every account we have, but we like to, again, share that. For transparency to our finance and school committee, um, should you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I see no questions.
Okay, um, our next item is our capital fee. Um, this is a fee that we've talked about as part of the FY twenty-five budget. Um, so we've put together a preliminary packet, but the capital fee is a fee that we charge. Our out of district students, um, an additional fee over and above the DESI um approved tuition fee. This was something that um Minuteman had worked um with, and you'll see the original correspondence um dated in twenty sixteen to get this approved. When there was a lot of out of district students that were attending Minuteman. Um, so there are two different um fee amounts um that we're proposing. Um, we are showing the school committee for transparency. This is um not a required vote. But it is something that's approved by DESI. Um, so we will be sending it out tomorrow, um, assuming there are no questions. Um, I'll go through the calculation, but there is a type A and a type B community. Um, so the type A community, we're proposing eight thousand four hundred sixty-eight dollars. And type B community, six thousand three hundred fifty-one dollars. Um, this is the calculation that DESI gave us. It's our annual debt service, um, divided by our total number of member town students. Um, type A is a municipality that does not offer or provide access to at least five chapter seventy-four programs. And B is um the opposite, they do offer, so they get um seventy-five percent. Um, so we'll look at um the number of students in type, the type A municipalities, which is detailed out on the following page. And then seventy-five percent of the type B, um, to get an adjusted number of students, and then. Um, it's a simple division um by the annual debt service to get those amounts. Um, so you'll see here, um, the number of um in district students, out of district students. Which district they're in, in which type of district they're in, to help support. The calculation. Um, and this is the original um approval that Minuteman got. Um, Minuteman's actually the only um. Vocational school um that has been approved to charge an additional. Um, so I am happy to answer any questions on this. The finance committee did uh review this as well.
Alice.
I don't actually have a question. I just wanted to say for the newer members, it used to be that. The out of district towns paid less per student than the member towns. And this was a very long uh ordeal to get this passed in twenty sixteen so that we could. Charge them for the building.
Thank you for doing that.
Wasn't me.
It was partly you.
Uh, think collectively.
It was the collective us. That was a long, long battle, and we had a lot of soldiers helping um get this very commonsensical thing through. No questions? We can move on.
All right. Moving along. Um, next we have our special education um fee. This is also an incremental fee. Uh, that is charged to out of district students, um, if they. Um, are part of the special education program within Minuteman. Um, so again, an incremental fee for out of district students in addition to the tuition and capital fee. This is a a vote that's required by the school committee. And how it is calculated is we actually use the actual expenses from our end of the year report. Um, and that's the initials here, E O Y R. That's a state required report. Um, so at the end of each year, we look at all of our actual expenses and. The function codes that I've shown in previous reports is how we report back out to the state, so we follow their chart of accounts. Um, we have taken for this report just the special education expenses. Um, so you'll see for FY twenty-two and FY twenty-three, our FY twenty-two actuals. Created our special education fee here, and our FY twenty-three actuals, based on the report that was just submitted. Um, this fall, uh, calculate out what our FY twenty-five. Um, fee would be. So how that's done is we add up again all of the special education um salary. Plus the non-salary to get to a grand total of two million three hundred thousand. Um, and divided by our enrollment in the special education program, um, to get a per people cost. So I'm happy to answer any questions uh surrounding this calculation as well.
Just a comment. Many, many thousands of years ago, when Ron Fitzgerald was the superintendent of this school. They estimated the cost, and that's all they published, because there's no laws governing how you published it. Uh, and then he would charge the communities the number that they came up with. And then the law came by, in which you had to actually do the calculation, so they learned how to do that. And I don't think that we'd lost um money in that process when they went from their wild guess to the the actual. The actual number. Um, uh, the other comment is that I believe there's a fairly big jump. From last year to this year, and the and and the primary reason for that jump, Nikki is.
Yes, um, part of the FY twenty-three budget, if you remember, um, there was uh a lot of talk about COVID. Um, and additional support, um, that was going to be budgeted into the FY twenty-three budget. So when the budget was approved, it included two additional support staff. Um, you'll see the big jump, um, specifically in social workers. So there was an additional social worker, one F T E that was hired, um, planned in the FY twenty-three budget. Um, and then you'll also see some contracted services. Um, unfortunately, at the time they were hiring. Um, the demand for those positions was so strong, they weren't able to get an additional candidate to hire full time. So they did contract out services um when needed, but I will say there is um a big. Big jump or a big increase, but I believe that was planned um as part of the FY twenty-three budget.
Okay, so the primary reason is that the, in the post-COVID world, as we all know. Kids required more support, and you were filling in the blanks for that. That's the primary reason for this jump.
Absolutely.
So I would like a a motion to approve the FY twenty-five um special education increment fee as presented. Okay, any further discussion of the motion on the table?
Just point out that the finance committee has reviewed and recommended.
No further questions? Ah, Pam.
Sorry, just something that just caught my eye. Um, and I'm just curious. A um out of district placement tuition for a thousand dollars, that's. Um, any, I'm just curious what that would be going towards since it's. Would be highly unusual for an out of district placement to, you know, be that low.
I think, um, and I can go back and pull the invoice, but um I believe it was a s- a small, um. Expense, um, out to a school, um. Just to.
Yeah, that that it it's okay, I was just curious.
Yeah, um, I believe, I believe a majority of the placement was paid in the prior fiscal year, and that was like the very end. Uh, I think it was a cutoff um between, but it was, um, I specifically reviewed this with, um. Amy Peralt, the director of special education, um, and that is the proper placement for that specific invoice as. Um, it needs to be properly reported in the end of the year report, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Sharon.
Just a silly question. Are these percentages, um. Given to us by DESI that that's because it looks like the administrative assistant was seventy percent in fiscal year twenty-two, but it's a hundred percent in fiscal year. Twenty-three, is that something that we're determining the percentages, or does that get dictated to us by DESI?
Um, that is something that we are, we determined. Um, you'll see in FY twenty-two, um. It was a kind of a reorganization of the business office, um, in particular, um, the. Assistant superintendent and director of finance, Amy Peralt. Um, she split her time in um human resources, which was at thirty percent. Um, and then um part of the budget was budgeting, um. Someone, you know, full-time to take over um HR and then a full-time uh assistant. For uh special education as well. So that was part of a reorganization that was planned.
And then I guess my next question would be, maybe this is the wrong time to ask this, but as as her role has changed. Um, as of February first, is that going to affect next year's assessment, since she now has the assistant superintendent title? Or will we keep it at the seventy percent?
Um, that's something that we can certainly um review internally to determine how much of her her time um would be spent. Um, not in special education, so the percentage certainly might change. Um, and that's something that um next year we can um report back out on.
Thank you.
Yep.
Do you know further questions? So roll call vote, Pam.
Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Sarah Montague Arlington, yes.
Erica L Z Bolton, yes.
Steve Ladue Concord, yes.
Maggie Sharon Dover, yes.
Charlie Cabral Lancaster, yes.
Sharon Musto Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulaneated, yes.
I was still a guest, so yes.
Very good. I believe we still have one more item on the finance report.
Oh, wonderful. Our last item um is our certified excess and deficiency. So as part of the FY twenty-five budget, um, in January, we voted a uncertified. Excess and deficiency amount. Um, I think we told you that once it was certified, um, so this was our letter, it was certified on. Um, February fourth, um, by the state, we do have to, um. Vote the certified number. So this vote um is kind of more of. Um, you know, just to put it on the books that it is certified, um, this is our general fund. Um, number, and just to give everyone kind of an idea of what um excess and deficiency is again. Um, it is our balance, so you know, as far as like our budget, we have a certain amount of revenue, less expenses. Um, that excess, um, or that fund balance, some people call it in towns free cash. Um, is kind of what they're looking at, right? And they don't want it um to go over five percent. Or you have to give some money back to the towns. Um, our school committee policy or finance committee. As we like to try to keep that number between three to five percent. Um, you'll see here on this line, uh, we did have a small excess amount of a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Over the five percent, um. Each year in the budget, um, in what you're voting on now, is we use our certified E and D. To reduce member town assessments. So we are reducing member town assessments by six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Which is over the excess a hundred and fifteen thousand, therefore, that is part of um what we're giving back in our FY twenty-five budget.
And so you would like a motion to authorize six hundred fifty thousand from the certified excess and deficiency fund to reduce member town assessment for the. FY twenty-five budget as presented?
Please.
The move.
Second.
Further discussion, any further discussion? Very well then, uh, uh, Steve.
Just wanted to point out that uh our our initial calculations that when we voted the budget a couple of weeks ago. Uh, was spot on on it when we got the certified E and D, so a lot of credit goes to Nikki and. Because uh we were right on, right online with what we had expected.
I will echo that and say Nikki is doing a fabulous job together with her internal constituents. We appreciate you. Thank you.
Roll call vote, Pam.
Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Sarah Montague Arlington, yes.
Erica L Z Bolton, yes.
Steve Ladue Concord, yes.
Maggie Sharon Dover, yes.
Charlie Cabral Lancaster, yes.
Sharon Musto Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulaneated, yes.
I was still a guest, so yes.
That I believe ends the finance report, does it not, Steve?
Yes, it does.
Let me point out that a a number of these financial issues can get somewhat um hairy, to say the least. And we are very, very lucky to have Steve on board. Um, to help uh explain, understand, and to interface with the administration on some of these issues that can get. As I say, quite obscure. So um he is, he he is very efficient in our meetings. He uh explains things calmly when we need them explained, and he understands. A lot more about some of these issues than I certainly do, and that's um, we're very lucky to have somebody like that in our school committee.
Thank you. You can call me Mr. Obscurity.
Yeah, okay. Some of the items are obscure. You're not, I don't find you obscure at all. Great, now I look for the excitement part of the meeting. We have all sorts of fascinating reports on the interim superintendent. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm gonna, uh, items A, B, and C on our agenda will be handled by Michelle Resendez, our Director of Operations. Uh, when she finishes her reports, uh, Sarah will uh, take care of item D. So right now I'd like to, uh. Uh, defer to Michelle.
Thank you, Kevin. Um, Julia, can I share my screen?
You're all set, Michelle.
Okay. So um, I'm giving a report. Um, as Kevin said, the first three items are basically about. Facility project updates. We have a couple of different things going on in the district. Um, the first thing I want to talk about is our north building update. Um, as of January, we were finally turned over the north building from the contractor. Um, and we now have the ability to go in and do the rest of the work through um. Our students and our teachers. Um, just a quick overview of the remaining work is that we have electrical plumbing and students along with the instructors. Um, they're gonna install electrical plumbing and HVAC. Um, then we are going to um, relocate existing metal fab machines and equipment. Into the north building. This will allow for some um, additional learning areas. Within the metal fab shop. Um, we, as you all know, we. Have a lot of our related rooms being held, um, with academic classes being held in them. So it creates a tight space within one of the shops. Um, in order to have that learning time with the students outside of them using the machinery. So by moving this machinery into the north building, we're able to create that additional space within their shops. Um, they'll install electrical service, fire alarm, voice and data systems. Um, light fixtures, HVAC equipment, exhaust fans, supplies van, um, fans. Um, all of the plumbing for an emergency eyewash station. Um, and then we're gonna do the rigging and relocation of the equipment. Um, all town inspections for electrical, HVAC and plumbing will be done by the town of Lincoln. Um, our timeline to start this work um, with our students is estimated in the next three to four weeks, weather permitting. We've kind of had to hold off a little bit because of the weather, because the building is basically a shell. And the students would be working in the elements um, during that timeframe. So, um, you know, just kind of waiting it out a little bit um, longer for nicer weather, um, so that we can work in there. So if anybody has any questions about the north building, um, let me know.
Questions, Michelle. It's just exciting. It must be really exciting for those students to be able to, and the teachers to really jump in now.
Yes, yeah.
When do you believe that this um, facility would be available for students to actually start using?
So they, they think that the work probably is only gonna take about a month, I believe. Um, so. You know, within the next couple of months, hopefully, um, we're definitely aiming by the end of the school year to. Um, at least have everything installed and ready to go. And hopefully, um, you know, the machinery moved over to there.
How do you move the machinery over? That's heavy, right? So.
Yes, there's, there, um, that is actually something that I probably have to talk to Al about. Because um, he's the one that's really heading this off, um. But however it is, I'm sure we'll make it happen. We may need to hire somebody. I don't know the specifics of that just yet. We're, we're moving through the electrical and HVAC at the moment.
Very good.
All right, so moving on, um, twenty Mill Street. Um, this is exciting for me, um, because it was kind of the first project that I took on, um, when I came on. So it's really exciting to see it coming to fruition. Um. You know, I, this is a list, we can take a quick look at it, but a, a list of all of the stuff that has been done. Um, and then, you know, just what's remaining. So just really quickly, some of the remaining tasks on Mill Street were things that, you know, we couldn't do until. Uh, you know, our construction had uh, been finished. Um, also, you know, with the thought of moving in over February vacation, um, we, we kind of held off on. You know, installing, um, you know, our printer, our scanner, our technology wise. Um, so that will all be happening kind of simultaneously with um, the move. Um, we have hired a moving company. Um, they are coming on February twentieth. Um, the teachers in animal science have done an amazing job, um. Packing up the, the shop in their related classroom and getting it ready for the move. They've went over, they've labeled, they've uh, color coded, um, you know, they just recently met with Mrs. Ard. Um, about like their, their uh, evacuation plans, their safety plans. Um, they've really, really been a great help through this process. And um, very accepting and, and excited to get into this building. The, the only um, thing that will be held off until next year. Is just the replacement of the front steps and the side steps. That's just a project that's gonna happen in the next year due to the availability of our students. And them working on so many different projects at this moment. We have hired our cleaning company that will be going over on a nightly basis, cleaning the um. Space just as if it was within um, the main campus. Um, we've had our wifi, we have our fire panel and our alarm system's been installed. And um, our electrical's been upgraded, our plumbing's been done on the refurbishing of the bathrooms. Um, we've installed a new floor, which you'll see pictures in a second of. Um, you know, we've installed the dog washing sink and uh, we have the washer and dryer already plumbed out. And electric um, all set for uh, the move on the twentieth. So you know, we're really ready to go and get our students in there and start a new chapter in the animal science program. Um, my favorite saying is teamwork makes the dream work. And that definitely, definitely happened when it came to this property. Uh, we had plumbing, carpentry, electrical. Our IT department, the animal science department, um, our principal, our, you know, vocational coordinator. I mean, we, we really had all hands on deck when it came to this project. And most of all, we had the best students, um, doing the greatest work. Um, I want to shout out, I, I actually had saw, um. The carpentry, I had went in, I think I had told you guys this before, where they did, um, some, you know. Pre-learning about patching and, and installing floor. And I got to see that firsthand and then to see, you know, the, the fruits of the labor. I, as you could say for the teacher, to then come over and see them have done it in this building and done it so well. Um, it just really sings true to who Minuteman is and who we, um, how we. Uh, inspire our students to do their best work. So, um, this is just a couple of pictures of, you know, some of the work that they have done. There is, there's other work that was done as well in this building, but just to give you a little quick view. Um, and then also, um, wanted to talk about the budget and that's also teamwork makes the dream work. Um, one, because Jeff gave me more money, so I was able to meet the budget. Um, and two, because I will say that our IT director did chip in. Um, as with part of his budget to help us so that we could make sure that we expanded the security. Um, surveillance of the property. We also received a grant, um. From Mega, um, that also helped us with the security. So i- it's definitely um, a whole group effort here, um, when it comes to that. From the budget to the just completion of the project. But our overall budget was thirty-five thousand. We've expended eight thousand two eighty-six oh seven to date. Um, we have encumbered twenty-six thousand oh sixty-four seventy-six. And as Nikki had said before, the encumbered is there's a purchase order and we're just either waiting for the bill. Or waiting for the service to be completed, um, before we pay it. So our total expended in encumbered for this project is a walking thirty-four, three fifty, eighty-three. So I came in, just squeaked right in there under budget. But again, that's really with um, help from Drew and um, his play, his part in that as well, so.
Michelle, look at the smiles on those carpentry kids.
Oh, they were so great. I was so happy when I went there that I caught them. You know, with a, with a group of kids there to take their picture and they were very happy and, and. Um, you could tell they were extremely proud of the work that they did and they really did a wonderful job.
So this is a making lemonade situation. We had a very serious problem with space and with this program. The problem could not be fully solved at this time. So with a lot of imagination and some forethought, a project at a, what I thought was a fairly small amount of money. Was developed to mitigate, not solve, but substantially mitigate the problem for a number of years. That's where this problem came from. And here we are nearing uh, fruition, um. Uh, at a reasonable timeframe, at a, a number which is fairly inexpensive to solve the problem. Okay, it's still thirty-five thousand dollars, but relative to the size of the problem we had, it's not a lot of money. And you made more lemonade by, of course, having, being a vocational, having the students involved in, in, in doing the project. I'm very excited, I'm very excited by um, Michelle thinking, we really need a handicap bathroom here that's gonna raise the price. Almost afraid to say that. And of course, we said, of course, that, that makes. Perfect sense. Thank you for bringing the idea up. I look forward to the opening of this and to see how well your design. Uh, works for the program for the interim period and we don't know how long the interim is gonna be, so it's good, it looks like.
And Michelle, a quick question for you, um, is there a plan to pressure test the facility and the ex- and the client experience? If you will, using the students and maybe those of us that have dogs kind of run through. You know, I could bring my dog in for whatever sort of experiences the students want to take, just to see if we can work out any kinks. I'm just thinking from an equipment standpoint or flow standpoint, I'm sure we could find enough folks with pets to help you out.
Yeah, we actually, um, our assistant superintendent, um. Ms. Peralt has actually brought in her um, dog and had them um. Work with her puppy, um, who's so cute, she's so cute, um, recently. And I will continue that process moving forward as well. The, the eventual, um, you know, once they're in and settled, they, they do are, they are going to open up to the public. For grooming services and some other, um, you know, um, animal, um, services. But I, I think that's a great idea, maybe before we open it to the public, we, you know, have staff or, you know, general. Bring in, um, some animals just to test out and let the kids get used to their new space. Without the pressure of it being an actual client. I understand that, that's a great suggestion.
Very good.
Um, I just want to note too that this also, um, this move opens two additional rooms within the main campus. Um, it gives back a related uh, area for the grouping that's down in, um. Where Horticultural Environmental Science and um, Biotech is. Um, and then it also gives a classroom to the teacher that has been teaching in the Lemon Lounge. Um, for the la- for the, since the beginning of the school year. So, um, this move not only benefits the animal science, um, giving them their own space. But also it helps with um, our species issues within um, the main campus.
Okay, thank you very much.
So then, oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just had a quick question. Do you, do you happen to know if the Lemon Lounge will be converted back to uh, its original design purpose? Or if it will continue to be used as a, um, additional classroom?
So it's not gonna be used as an additional classroom, but it is not most likely. I think we would have to talk to Ms. Bouchard, um, about that. But I think the general consensus is, is that we're, we're gonna um, put our heads together. And think of a really great use of that space and it not be a um, hangout spot. Um, which is what I think it kind of was uh, previously. I don't know, I was not here for that. But I know the talk is that we, you know, we can um, creatively come up with a really good use of that space.
Yeah, Michelle, that was the thought is that, um, previously it was um, a breakout space. And unfortunately, just the location it's in, it's very hard to supervise during the course of the day. Um, so it would be more of a, you know, a headache of us telling students, please leave this room, leave the area, go back to your classrooms, go back to lunch. Go back to where you're supposed to be. It's a great concept. I just think it's a little bit better for a college campus. Um, where students have a little bit more freedom and don't need as much supervision. Um, but we would like to utilize the space as something else, um, whether we use it for um, a teacher that teaches entrepreneurship classes. And he can use that area to pull the kids together there, um, or teachers to bring students out that need smaller testing groups or something like that. So we do want to keep it as an instructional space, but just not have it as open-ended as it was previously.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Katie.
Yeah, I see no more comments on this issue.
Okay. Um, the next thing I wanted to talk about is our, um, an RFI that I have just put out. Uh, last Thursday, is it the Thursday or Friday? I actually can't even remember which day it was. Um, this is our Minuteman P three, um, RFI. What RFI is, you know, request for information. We're looking for interest, um, from parties about. Um, where we just talked about our animal science space, um, the twenty Mill Street. It was meant to be a temporary situation. Um, this was a um, idea that had been presented previously. And we wouldn't, had went out, um, looking for a private partnership. And um, so now it's just kind of bringing it to the surface again. And, you know, just throwing the net out there and seeing, um, who may be interested in this. There have been a couple of other school districts that especially for animal science, um. That have created these partnerships and really developed some, um, amazing veterinary space. Um, and so what this RFI is, is in um, reference to what we call the East Building. Or the Tremont Building, um, depending on how long you've been here, is what you call it. Um, this is a sixteen thousand square foot building that is sitting on our property, right above the fields. Um, and um, it has been home to many things. But most recently, it was home to a couple of different daycares. Um, it was always used as a rental space, uh, except actually through COVID. We did have, um, uh, students of staff that were able to go there. And um, um, have assistants in there at home learning during COVID while their parents were. Uh, at work at Minuteman. Um, this is a, a great space. It just, this needs to be re-envisioned and repurposed. Um, and so I'll just give you some details on. Um, so our goal is to establish a partnership with a life sciences, um, compatible entity for the renovation. Um, fav- phase one involves transforming six thousand um, square feet of the sixteen thousand square feet. Um, square foot available. Um, and we wanted to include an active veterinary clinic, labs. Classroom, meeting area and offices. Um, just to give you right down in the bottom of this screen right here. So right here is a um, depiction of the building. The portion that we are talking about, the six thousand square feet, is actually the side portion. Which I believe was the original portion of the building. Um, this is also the portion of the building that, um, last year had water damage to it. So it has been all. So it has been all um, like, Servpro came in and, and took care of all of the water damage, but it has not been repaired um, since because it, it just seems fruitless to spend money on an area that we're looking to um, revamp or, or redevelop. Um, and then this second picture here is just kind of an example on where it is on our campus and um where the area is. So this would be the closest part of the building to the roadway. Um, is what that we're looking for the repair of the space. Now, the remaining part of this building, just to give people an idea um, is in fairly good condition. I know the exterior of the building looks a, a little bit um worn, to say the least. Um, but the interior of the building could, could eventually be some additional space for additional classrooms or another partnership or um for um another vocational um program as well. We just haven't moved to that point yet. So right now our focus is on the six thousand square feet. Um, we're looking for a long-term lease up to fifty years, um, a profit-sharing me, um, profit-sharing um relationship. Um, we also, you know, really we're looking to invest in this space and like just to enhance the educational offerings and, and with so much in, interest in our animal science program, uh, and it's only in its third year, I believe. And um, it's, it's a really great program that, that a lot of people in the area are interested in. And, you know, um, everybody loves their animal and that's they're a really big thing in, in everyone's culture today, um, more so. So it really opens a lot of opportunities for our students to have the experience and a, in like a live vet um scenery. Um, the, oh, sorry, I can't see this. So I posted um the RFI on February ninth. Um, I also reached out, we had um Mrs. Arndt and um the animal science teachers had composed a list of some of their contacts in the field as well as, you know, um, prominent uh veterinary clinics in our area um, that we sent out like a, a, you know, kind of like a, hey, we're doing this, um, we think you would be a great partner. Here's our RFI, um, if you're interested, get back to us. Um, then we also, um, we have a deadline for submissions of questions from February nineteenth. Um, our responses to the questions are by February twenty second. The submission is due on March fourth. And then we'll have an informational meeting um with any respondents on March twenty first. Um, and then at, from that informational meeting, um, we will determine uh, what our RFP is actually gonna look like and that will be posted. You know, this is a, a tentative date, probably March, um, the end of March, um, uh, beginning of April, where we're going out at that point for full proposals, um, if we have any interested parties. Um, some of the other details is, you know, this, um, sorry, I'm trying to think of which one I wanna say first. Um, for some of our other details, we for the RFP, um, I think you guys have all seen in, within your budget, a, a vote to fund our capital stabilization account. Um, what we're looking for is, you know, when we talked about this uh potential partnership previously, you know, we, we talked about a fifty fifty split or, or how we would work that. And um, we kind of got an estimate from our um, uh, KBA who are our engineers, um, or what we call house doctor, uh, just to give us ideas when it comes to these building projects. And he was potentially um estimating that the build out would be about around seven million dollars. Um, which would mean that Minuteman would, would need to have or should have about three point five um to be able to contribute to this project. Um, so that, that funding of the capital stabilization account is, is truly, really important to not only um put us in a position that if we do have an interested partner, we're able to move forward without having to go back to any of our towns for funding. But also, you know, it's not just about the animal science um program. It's, it's really about making spaces available and expanding our programs and opportunities to our students. And, and this is a great opportunity, um, and, and an opportunity, and it's also not unheard of either. Um, we aren't going out on a limb to say we're gonna create this. Um, there are multiple other vocational schools that have this um type of relationship. Um, the other part of it is, you know, Plan B is if we don't find a partner, um, we're able to, using that stabilization account, be able to build out what we um, can envision with, with the funds that we have um, uh, the space and instead of having a property um on our campus that is vacant and, and not being used to, to be able to invest funds in it to give some additional opportunities to our students. Um, the other part is that we have looked into a um, the Skills uh Capital Grant, um, which they have a FY twenty five lab monetization grant that is coming out. I, I spoke with the Executive Office of Education, um, specifically the person who works on the um Skills Capital Grant um, and talked about what we were thinking, what we would potentially do and, and would this be something that we could potentially write a grant for. They have awarded grants up to one point nine million dollars for this exact um uh, project. Um, I got some positive feedback from him and, you know, my one concern was that, you know, we had used the Capital Skills Grant um for animal science equipment um, in FY twenty two, I believe. Um, and they tend to shy away from giving the same program funds, but because that was an equipment piece and this is modernizing um a lab, it actually falls onto two different parts of the grant. Um, so that puts us in a really good place to be able to at least write for this grant and have the potential of um it being accepted. So um, nothing's guaranteed uh as, as we all know, but it, it's, it's nice to know that this is another option or another revenue stream for us possibly. Um, and then we, you know, I just wanted to talk about the additional utilization of this property. You know, during the evenings or weekends, um, we could have post-secondary partners is including offices, classrooms, laboratory, training sites and project based workspaces that we will be able to rent out and possibly recruit some of our funds um that we put into this property. And this is really there to engage diverse populations. We, you know, we all, we wanna talk about an emphasis on disadvantaged use, um, a mix of gender participation and a balance between public and access, public access and student use. So this really gives our students an opportunity to have real world experience as well as creating a space that we can be open to the public in and, um, you know, um, really be an inviting and, and functional space for not only our communities, but our, our, our um, Minuteman population.
That was quite a report. Uh, good update on where we are and moving forward. I look forward to seeing March fourth and see what type of responses we get, any questions or comments from the membership before we move on. I think it was pretty complete.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the reports on those uh three very different uh property situations.
Thank you, I'm excited.
Yeah.
All right, that's all I have.
Thank you, Michelle. Um, for item D, we'll ask Sarah Ad to do her presentation on the uh CTE frameworks.
I'm gonna share my screen. Can everybody see it?
No, yes.
Yep, I can see it.
Okay, great. So um, the frameworks for all of the Chapter Seventy Four programs are currently being revamped and changed. So the current um format that they're in is also being changed, so they're being pared down a little bit. Um, so this is the new website that the Department of Ed is using, it's called The Hub. Um, the website is right up here, so it's just um ma- uh M A C T E um dot N S four E D dot com. Um, I don't believe this is on the Department of Ed website yet. Um, but if you go to this website, this is basically, they're calling it the next generation. Um, it's a pretty basic website, they're still building it out. But if we go down to the bottom here, um, it's definitely a better um resource for families to learn about CTE. So they tell you a little bit about what frameworks are, um, you know, how they work. And then if you go up here to the top under frameworks, you can do, so it's, what is a framework? So it's basically, um, the Chapter Seventy Four frameworks that we have now are broken up the same exact way. So we have our hell, uh, safety and health strand, our technical. It's still that same exact formatting, except it's just looks a little bit different and it is um not as not as specific as it was before, it's gotten a little bit more broad. So if we go up here to frameworks, just click frameworks, these are the ones that have already been approved, so they've already been updated. There are some that are currently, all of them went out for public comment. Um, there are a lot here at the bottom that have not been updated yet. So all of these are in the works to be updated. If you go down to the bottom, there is a calendar, so you can see when specific frameworks are gonna be um talked about and updated. The way the calendar works is, there's an employer summit, so these are just all Zoom links if you click on them. Um, they're gonna invite all the employers, so industry partners, to come on board first to kind of narrow down what are the really important parts of the frameworks and, you know, how they should be uh put in there. And then it's rolled out to the teaching staff, also a Zoom link. And then once all of that feedback is gotten, um, it goes to the commissioner. So these are the ones that have currently been approved. When you, I'll just click on one to show you here, so they all look exactly like this. So what they did is, if you went to the old frameworks, it was basically just a Word document that you clicked on. So this kind of has everything in a one stops, um, stop. So it tells you a little bit about the program. Here's your standard, so this is the frameworks right here. So this is what teachers and parents and students can look at. Standard one is still safety and health. Um, then all your technical standards. So when you click on each of these, these are all the skills that students would be. These are the competencies that students would get checked off on. And then the last ones for all of them are still the same, employability, entrepreneurship and the digital literacy. These three are a little bit more specific now to whatever um Chapter Seventy Four program it is. So like this one for Cosmo is very specific about, you know, talking to the customer, um, taking tips, things like that. Whereas before it was a lot more general and they were basically all the same. If you go back, um, so we're still on cosmetology. Um, what they did was, let me just down a little bit here. Um, they put all this information on all of them that's very Massachusetts specific, so it'll tell you the job outlook. Um, the median wage, how many jobs are out there, um, annual openings. This is all very Massachusetts specific, whereas before we didn't have any of this information. And if we did, it was more um countrywide, so depending on the career, it might look not as, you know, it, it might look like the outlook is not as great, but since it was nationwide, it's a little bit skewed where this is more Massachusetts-based. You have all your IRCs that you would get for that specific Chapter Seventy Four program. Um, and then if we go down here a little bit, they have the labor market analysis, equipment that your program would need, um, how to get the licensure if you wanna become a teacher in that program. So they've kind of condensed it all into one page. Um, there's also some other, actually, where's the really good one here? Um, for families and students, um, there's actually a school finder. So people can put in their address, put in the program that they're looking for and all the schools will come up. So this is an easy way to figure out, especially if they're not familiar, if there's a CTE school near them, that will help them um, determine, you know, oh, hey, that school, that is a, you know, a CTE school, it does have a program that I'm interested in. So the other part is under additional resources, this is where you're gonna find exploratory. Exploratory hasn't changed that much. Um, it's just kind of more written out, so families can see what exactly exploratory is and um, what are some of the parameters around it. So you still have to do a minimum of a hundred and twenty hours of exploratory. Talks about, um, depending on the type of school, how the exploratory might look. So this is a really, it's much better resource for families, whereas before you couldn't find any of this information. If someone, you know, had, didn't know anything about Minuteman, didn't know what exploratory was, there was none of this kind of written out for them. So this is a not, a much better version of what's happening um at a school like ours. The other part that's important here is they also included the co-op manual. I say manual because there used to be a manual, just like frameworks for co-op directors, and it's now gone to this, um, this one site right here. So this is basically all the um parameters for co-op, if your student wants to go on co-op, um, you know, all the labor laws that we follow. But it does give the schools a little bit more flexibility in how we do our co-op. So if, if you're familiar with the old co-op manual, um, it's very specific about like you can do this, you can't do that. This gives a little bit more flexibility to schools. Uh, let's see here, and then they also, um, in the old frameworks, they had what we called crosswalks, which um for each standard, it would show you some different um academic lessons that you could possibly do that connected to certain standards. So this just gives, I think they're gonna add more of these, but for right now, they just have math. Um, you know, how you can apply it in your shop. So for plumbing, this takes you to the plumbing, this is the plumbing page. Not all of them have this, but there's an actual teacher lesson in here. Um, that the teacher can kind of, you know, especially if it's a person coming from industry and they've never taught before. This is a good starting point to say, oh, that's how, you know, math integration works. Oh yeah, we do this anyway. Just kind of showing a teacher um who might be new, especially, you know, this is a great way to get integration in there and show kids how that math that you're learning in your class relates directly to your trade. So I really, I like this a lot, actually. That was a good addition. So it's basically the nuts and bolts of it. Um, a lot of the other programs that haven't been reworked yet um, down here, as they, uh, there, there is a calendar down here, but um once they get reworked after the educator update, if you go back to the site, um, it'll tell you when the public comment is and you can make it right on this page. Um, I did send this out earlier in the year to all of our um advisory committees, so a lot of industry people did go on and make public comment on um, a lot of these that are already approved. You will also notice, while I'm here, kind of related, um, veterinary science is up here, it's, the public comment is closed, but you'll see down here up to be updated, animal science. So those two frameworks are actually getting separated. So animal science is gonna mean basically large animals. So if you go to like a Bristol Aggie that does, um, you know, equine and dairy production and beef production, things like that, that'll be um under animal science, whereas the program that we have will fall under veterinary science. It's, which is more clinical with um pets, basically cats, dogs, smaller animals. So when you click on these, you can cut, you can see more of the difference, but that was one of the major changes, in case you're wondering what's the difference. Um, that's the only one that that happened to. So there's a lot of other ones that'll be going into um update and they will have public comment. Um, that will go out to our advisory committees again, so that everybody has a chance to comment. and also know the timelines, so they can go on there for the employer part and, and actually have a say in, you know, what type of equipment and what things need to be covered. So, does anybody have any questions?
Very intuitive to me, Sarah. The, the way that they redesigned it, and it seems like that's your impression. Is that, am I reading you correctly?
Um, yeah, I'll be honest, I was a little skeptical at first. Because, because just coming from the, you know, we use, our other frameworks, our older ones are literally eighty-five pages long. So to look at one page, we were like, okay, you know, this is pared down a lot, but I think it does make a lot more sense to kind of pare it down, like whereas before they would say, it, it was like, you know, for programming and web, learn how to turn a computer on. That was one of the standards. And so they cut stuff out like that. So it does make a little bit more sense. And they're still tweaking it. I mean, this is brand new, so I think as we go through and people start actually using these frameworks, there'll be a lot more critiquing. But another thing that Liz Bennett, the commissioner of CTE, said is, you know, the old frameworks would take ten to twelve years to get updated. These ones, they're up there, you know, where industries are changing so quickly, these will be able to be updated, you know, in two years' time, a year time, depending on like biotech. That program changes so quickly with equipment that this will be an easier way to just update those frameworks.
Sarah, is there a consensus within the school as to whether this change and how they are presenting frameworks is an improvement or a, a problem for the school moving forward?
If I honestly talk here from the teacher's perspective, it's, it's not positive, because I think people are just really used to the eighty-five pages and like, you know, having more of a roadmap, more specific. But I think, you know, I've, I've met with Liz a few times to go over this, and I think if you're a newer teacher, it might be a little bit more difficult to navigate, but as we go through this and they critique it and make changes based on how, you know, teaching is going across different schools, I, I think it will improve. There are a lot of pros to it, definitely. I mean, it's definitely a lot more streamlined than it was before.
Do you believe they have reduced the quality or improved the quality of the frameworks or neutral, as far as we are concerned?
I think it depends on the framework. Some of the advisory committees felt like it watered it down a little bit. Others felt like it strengthened it. It was more specific around the particular shop. So, I mean, if you, if you start to look through some of these, some of them are a lot longer than other ones. And that might be more based on industry feedback that they got. So, I think it just depends.
School committee members, any further questions? That was, again, a very complete report with a a very interesting tour. Never seen that, I don't think we've had a tour of that before. Any other questions before we move on? Very well then, thank you so much for that tour. I found it, I found it very interesting. And I would like to hear updated comments from the staff as this is implemented, to see what they think about it.
All right, will do.
Okay, thank you very much. Very good. We are skipping item eight or postponing it, because I believe that Dr. Pearl was not feeling well, so we'll be skipping item eight for the time being and put that in March. Which brings us to an item nine. A Superintendent Screening Subcommittee, Pam Norris.
Thank you. Well, as I think you know, this Thursday, we have an in-person meeting, the purpose of which is to make a, well, the goal is to come to a decision on our next superintendent. So I just want to encourage people to be reading the comments. I did count them, Jeff, there's a hundred and twenty-two comments. To watching the videos, to be reviewing the candidate information. There is some new references that have been provided, that have been uploaded to that folder that has references and resumes, so be sure to go back to that, because there's new information there now, and there'll be some more new information, I think, put in tomorrow. So, a reminder, we're meeting at six thirty. The vote for a new superintendent, sort of per our regional agreement, will be a weighted vote. And if any of you want to refresh yourself on the weighted vote formula, it is on the website under the School Committee section. So, you know, as I think, you know, we have talked about, it's based on the four-year rolling average, but it is available on the website if you'd like to refresh that before we come to our meeting. Any questions?
Could someone resend the link to the folder that has the new uploads?
Yes.
So just one other thing that I haven't mentioned before, one of the first things I'm going to ask for you to do at the meeting is, those of you who've gone to a visit, you kind of need to report back on the visit. Now, you're not going to do a half, every person, so if you, two of you went, you're both going to state your, your opinion of how things went. So a brief description of how the visit was run, which is by them, and your impressions of what you learned about the candidate from the visit. One of the most important things to understand about a candidate in reality is how closely does the reality of the candidate meet with what we've seen in terms of CVs and presentations and whatnot? And that is something that you can glean to some extent from the visits, even though they are to some extent staged. I know that Sarah and I found our visit was very interesting. I hope your other visits were very interesting, and I look forward to it. So everybody's going to give a brief report. And to also remind you that one thing we're going to do it, again, towards the beginning, to really launch it after we get these reports, is we're going to do a runaround where you're all going to give your opinion. In Philly briefly, but not that briefly. We're going to do that in alphabetical order by town. And then, from there, we will find our way to get to a vote. I'm not going to move this meeting fast, so there's going to be time to reflect. I'm going to mention this again on Thursday. But in, in doing this sort of operation, it's very important to keep a really open mind. Because one of the most important pieces of information you're going to get are the views and opinions of your peers. I refer back to the screening committee in which, as we were doing our go-around, saying who should be the nine interviewees. There were so many perceptions and things that I missed that were brought up by the fellow members, that by the time we went around, my opinion on who the nine should be had changed. I hope that we have that kind of open mind. I'll also state that the quality of the comments was very high. And I read through them once, and I'm going to read through them again before our meeting on Thursday. And hopefully, we will come to a decision on Thursday. There's never guarantee. But I look forward to seeing all of you there at the meeting. Do you have anything else to add to that, Pam?
No, thank you. That was well said, Jeff.
And I will have, I'll remind you of all the instructions on how we're going to move forward. It's going to be fun.
I just have one quick question. Are you going to give us some guidelines, Mr. Chairperson, on, on when we have our, our individual comments as we go around the room, alphabetical by town? So that we're not too long-winded, so that everyone can be heard?
The guy, the most important guideline is to be respectful of the candidates and what you're saying, because we have three candidates, all of which are, and I'll mention this again on Thursday, all of which are accomplished administrators at their schools. Some may not be people that you want to be superintendents. I would say that five minutes should be plenty. If you go over five minutes, it's probably too long. But you do want to get your thought out, so somewhere between, you know, two minutes and five minutes. And it is important that all of us state our opinion and reasoning so that people understand, and the community send us, understand why we're making the kind of decisions that we're making. So good judgment, and fortunately, alphabetically, Pam is first, and she is a uber professional. So when you hear how she handles this issue, it'll give you some extremely good guidance on how to do it. And it may be nerve-wracking for the, if you have not done this before, to state your opinion on such an important matter. But also keep in mind, as we do the go-around, your opinion may change in the course of the evening. So keep that in mind, too.
Yeah, and one thing, and depending on how the conversation goes, we may be doing several of these rounds.
I expect we will be doing more than one.
So that, you know, there's an opportunity, as you hear other comments, maybe someone picks up on something that, you know, you hadn't, that, you know, you have an opportunity to kind of re, you know, rethink and you know, just take in everything that is being said and that you're hearing.
And that's why I'm going to be in no hurry to push things along. You have plenty of time to reflect. You know, it's a balance between, you know, getting the job done, but, but in this kind of important issue, giving you sufficient time to reflect so you don't feel too rushed, although, of course, we are rushed. And I'll have some additional comments at the start of the meeting before I watch, so everybody who's watching can hear the same thing. Any other questions on that issue? Very good. Policy Subcommittee, Alice DeLuca.
I think I told you before that Dr. Pearl and her, her team are working on revising pretty much the entire policy manual. We're going to be bringing forward one section at a time, section I, I believe, will be first. And it's going to be a lot of reading. We're going to try to make it very quickly, so that we can vote an entire section at a time. And it, it will look like it has in the past, where there'll be the original document, some type of redline document, and the document as it will look when, when it's been approved. Hopefully, we'll be getting rid of some arcane documents. They're going to be more in tune with what Minuteman is actually doing in the school and less wedded to the MASC guidelines, if they don't apply. And it's going to be, I hope, a lot better. So just warning you, I guess, that we're going to have a large bunch of papers to read all at once several times, but that's a good thing.
So we will end up with a policy book that is shorter, better targeted. So we're doing a lot of work now to make life of future school committees much easier and will equate possible legal issues.
We will also be able to think about, you know, what is it that makes Minuteman special that is in the policy? Because that is one of the primary roles of the school committee, right, is to set policy for the schools. If there's things that need to be done, that need to, to be, adhere to some type of guidance that can come from the school committee policy, and that's your option to actually make things better. You know, and we're hoping that by doing it in this, this kind of direction where the administration is figuring out how, what applies actually to what the school is doing that makes it Minuteman, this will be a better, a better way of getting it done.
Any questions or comments? A lot of reading coming up, and it's not going to be on, on tape, right? You're going to have to actually read it. This is not going to be a book on tape that you can just like, you know, do your laps and listen to.
No, you can use one audible credit per month, Jeff.
Very good. Final item on the agenda has to do with what happens after we choose a, a new superintendent candidate on Thursday. At that point, we want to go into negotiations, and we want to wrap this up as soon as is possible, because, and I'll mention this again on Thursday, one of the questions that's asked many times was, will the new superintendent have the ability to help choose the, the new principal? And with great wisdom, your interim superintendent thought this issue through and came up with a timeline in which he could post for the position early enough to not lose a lot of candidates, but late enough so that if we can wrap up negotiations at a fairly good rate, the new superintendent will be able to have a lot of impact on the new principal, which is very, very important. Is that about right, Kevin?
Yeah, it's absolutely right. All three candidates expressed a real interest in getting that process, taking a lead, I should say, so so hopefully the timing will work out as aggressive.
So that is where we are, but it means that we will have, we will want to do the negotiations relatively as quickly as possible. And Alice has done a yeoman's job in collecting literally hundreds of thousands of superintendent contracts that you have sent her. And she is going to send these for you to read, some of them, or most of them. And what you're going to find is that there's a lot of fascinating stuff in there. Some of them are very straightforward, others have stuff, how the heck did they negotiate that? Now, what we have done over the years is we have gone from a convoluted superintendent's contract with lots of things that are kind of extra hidden in there into very straightforward contract in which the goal is to make it as clear as possible with no, no wacky stuff. So the theme of the negotiation will be no wacky stuff when we come to a contract. And of course, we have to know, understand what's important to the candidate. Because the, the bottom line salary is, of course, very important to the candidate, but you're often surprised at other things that may be very important to them. And that's the point of the negotiations. The point of the negotiations is to have a negotiation team which is given instructions by the school committee as a whole, guidelines, and then for that team to go into negotiations with the candidate and to come to an agreement, which is eventually on paper, which is turned by our attorneys into a legal agreement that you both sign. So I believe that the, I'm going to recommend that the negotiation team consists of Pam, myself, Erin, and Sharon, two experienced members, two non-experienced members. I'm also going to recommend, unless Pam objects, that Pam be the chair of this committee. If you don't want to do it, Pam, that's okay, I'll do it, but that's what I'm going to recommend. Would you object to being the chair of this committee? If you're very busy, I can do it. I am retired.
Yeah, I can do it, but as long as, and I believe you mean Erica, right?
Erica, yes, sorry.
Yeah, Erica. Yes.
So you would be willing to be chair of this?
I would be willing.
Yes, so my recommendation to the full school committee is that we appoint Pam as chair, Jeff, Erica, and Sharon on the negotiation team. I'd like a motion, then we can discuss it.
Maggie, Sharon's so moved.
Okay, discussion. Very well then, roll call vote, starting with Pam.
Pam Rose Acton, yes.
Pam Norris Acton, yes.
Sarah Matky Arlington, yes.
Erica Elsie Bolton, yes.
Eve Willdo Concord, yes.
Maggie Sharon Dover, yes.
Charlie Cabral Lancaster, yes.
Sharon Musto Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuleneden, yes. Alice is muted.
Alice Sturkis, yes.
Very good. So that team will, um, I think that what will uh, will probably do is, I don't know who I'm gonna ask, uh, or we should ask to make the, to go through this and make the first rec. So I think that the team will probably um, come up with the first suggestion based on some of the research that Alice has done, just a starting point. So we will meet first, and we're gonna call very shortly thereafter a special school committee meeting in which you will have read all the contracts and we will have had our discussion. And then we'll try to develop our first pass recommendation which we will then have a, then we will meet with the candidate. We'll probably ask the candidate first what it is that's important to them before we present anything. And then we take it from there, and you don't know how it's gonna go or where it's gonna go from them until you first have that first conversation with the candidate. And the negotiation team will keep going until we reach an impasse in which we cannot meet the um, recommendations of the school committee. In which case we come back to you and discuss the situation and you perhaps give us new instructions, and then hopefully we come to an agreement and we send it off to the lawyers. Now, how fast is this gonna be? I don't know, but I'm, I think that we should do it as fast as possible. So be prepared. For some meetings, they won't be very long, I don't think. They'll be called with fairly short notice. Steve?
Um, since I've got pending surgery, are they gonna be in-person meetings or?
No, these are gonna be remote, because I'm gonna be, I'm, I'm gonna be away, I'm gonna be in Maine for two weeks, so.
Cause I'm under house arrest for pretty much the month of March.
Yeah, these, these will be remote. I do want everybody to participate. There's no real reason to have these in person. Um, our meeting with the candidate, that might be in person or remote, I don't know. We gotta, the team has gotta discuss that. Any other questions at this point? It's kind of vague now, but it'll be filled in as we, as we move along.
Not a question, but a comment. Just to help manage Alice's inbox, I received the last three uh, current contracts of, of the schools that I was tagged with, and I routed them through Julia with a copy to Jeff, so those came in today. So, know Julie's busy, but wanna make sure.
If you, if, I think I got three from you today. I'm still missing some from some people. Um, but I've got a lot of contracts.
You're still missing some from me, Alice. I've had people say that they were sending them and they've yet to be sent, so I'm following up again tomorrow.
Isn't it strange how hard some of these are to get? Isn't that interesting?
I, I've been on the phone with Hudson a number of times and left a couple of emails, and now nobody is answering my call.
Isn't that what a world?
You know, Steve Sherrick is on the Hudson School Committee.
If, if you, if you know someone who is and they wanna help us, that'd be awesome.
I'll ask Steve.
They'll get it for you. So uh, if there are no more uh, comments on this, and of course, there'll be a lot more about negotiations, assuming they were successful on Thursday. Fingers crossed. Coming up, because as I say, there is, there was uh, there is a fair amount of pressure for us to get this done quickly, so the incoming superintendent can participate on the uh, principle, which I think is uh, e- extremely important. So thank you for um, your exhausting work on all these things. The last month or two, we're hopefully on the home stretch, at least for choosing a superintendent. And I would like a motion to adjourn, please, please. Good. Pam?
Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Sarah Matky Arlington, yes.
Erica Elsie Bolton, yes.
Eve Willdo Concord, yes.
Maggie Sharon Dover, yes.
Charlie Cabral Lancaster, yes.
Sharon Musto Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuleneden, yes.
Alice Sturkis, yes.
And by the way, all those people in the committee had agreed to be on or expressed interest in being on. I just didn't randomly choose them at this spur of the moment. I just wanted to know that. Thank you very much. Good to see you all, and I'll see you all in person on Thursday.
Bring snacks.
Good night, everyone.
Coffee.